Okay, we're going to call the meetings order. And we start our meetings with a prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me so love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. And where there is despair, hope. And where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. We know that you're with us at all times and in all places, if only we turn to you in faith. And so we turn to you now, seeking your continued blessings on those of us who have chosen public service, as well as those members of our community who are with us tonight, joining us in our deliberations and decision making. We ask that you give all of us patience and the commitment to respect and to listen to each other. For the members of this commission, help us always to be mindful that we are public servants. Help us to hear with our hearts and to think clearly and reasonably. Help us to have the vision to look at the issues before us with wisdom and the determination to do what is best, even if it is not easy. Guide us in all we do to work for the common good. We ask your blessings on all those who support and contribute to the work of this commission, knowing that without their diligent efforts, our work here would not be possible. Loving Creator, we pray all these things in the name of Jesus and all that is holy. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call, please?
Peter Hugendike.
Present.
Danny Wilcox. Van Sands.
Here.
Dwayne Owens.
Here.
Eric Carlson.
Present.
Mike Buck.
Here.
Roger Burton. Roger Burton, absent. Kevin Kirkwood. Kevin Kirkwood, absent. Deanna Shot Grace.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I'm sure you heard my phone going off. So if we could all mute our phones, so we don't have any interruptions. Okay, at this point in time, we have a staff report on the Board of County Commissioners' actions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Mark Denry, Director of Community and Economic Development. Just a couple of updates for you on some cases that you heard in September. September 5th, the Planning Commission heard the RKR Ranch Rezone, and then two weeks later, on September 19th, you had a recommendation on the Schluter Rezone. The Board of County Commissioners heard both of those cases on September 27th, and both of those items were approved. I've got actually another item unrelated to that. It's our understanding, Mr. Chair, that this is going to be your last night serving in this capacity, stepping away from the Planning Commission, and we wanted to acknowledge your service, and we just have a little something for you, and if you'd be so kind to step up by the flags, and thank you.
So this is a certificate of appreciation presented to Peter Hugendike in recognition of your hard work and selfless dedication to volunteering on the Elbert County Planning Commission since March 2018, and in our state October 3rd, 2023. We've got the Elbert County seal and signature by the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners and Mr. Richardson, and thank you for your service. Great, congratulations.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, we understand, based on the timeline there, serving on this Planning Commission for about five and a half years, and in the chair post for almost two years. And again, thank you for your exemplary service to Elbert County, and we certainly appreciate you and wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you. I really have enjoyed my time with the county, and there's been a lot of really good people to work with. The planning commissioners that I work with, I think, have a lot of talent and will do well going forward. The Board of County Commissioners that I've worked with over the last few years, the current ones as well as previous ones, like Danny Wilcox and Rick Pettit, that are not in, they're currently, have done a wonderful job with the county. They have put us in the black for the first time in a long time, got our finances, really invested in a way that give us a return that we haven't had in the past. So, I mean, they've done a lot of things for the county, and I really appreciate what they've done. And working with the public has really been fun. I mean, even the times when we have a really contentious issue, and we have a lot of people upset, and a lot of people talking about it, it's still, it's still fun. And, you know, I appreciate the members of the public that come into our meetings and have their input. All the way around, it's just been a great time for me. I've really enjoyed it, and I hate leaving. Since I'm leaving the county, I can't serve anymore. If I could, you know, I'll be over in Douglas County for a while, and I was hoping that I could still get, be involved somehow, but it's just not in the, in the county's regs to allow me to do it. I have to live in the county. I've been here for 22 years this time. I went to school in Elizabeth County in the 10th grade, or Elizabeth in the 10th grade, and it was a very small school back then. They had K through 12 in the same building, and junior and senior classes were together for homeroom. There's only five students in the senior class. So, I've got a little bit of history in the county, and I like this county. So, I'll leave it to the rest of you. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda items, and I don't think we have any, right? No consent agenda?
That is correct. We have none, thank you.
Now, we've got an option for citizen comments. At this point in time, if you would like to talk about something unrelated to what we're hearing tonight, something that you want to talk to the Planning Commission about that's not related to anything we're hearing tonight, this is a time where you could get up and talk about that. No, it's nothing to do with the application tonight. It's anything else other than that. Okay. Hearing none. We go to approval of the meeting minutes for September 19th. And was, did everybody have a chance to review those? Are there any issues, or? Okay. I would entertain a motion for approval. Okay? And who seconded it? Van did? Okay. So Greg and Van. We go into the public hearing process now, and, you know, this matter requires this group to conduct a quasi judicial hearing, which means the body must find facts and base its decision upon the application of the adopted regulations, standards, criteria, and the competent substantial and material evidence received during this hearing. You know, all testimony must be competent, on topic, and not repetitious. Each person that comes up to talk has three minutes to talk, and at the end of the three minutes, that's it. There's another kind of an explanation I'd like to give you also, is that the way we look at applications before us, it's the landowner's right to do what they want to as long as they're complying with the county regulations. So if they are doing everything according to the county regulations, then what we need to hear is, if somebody's against it, what we need to hear is why it doesn't meet the county's regulations. We also look at safety and health concerns. So if there's something that you have along those lines to bring to us, that's the type of thing we would like to hear. So I'm going to open the public hearing for the Systems Properties Rezone, RZ 233557. May we have the staff presentation, please?
Five acres. Oh, thank you. And 15.5 acres will be from agriculture to commercial, and 17.5 will be from agriculture to agriculture residential. The location of this project is 35570 County Road 13 in Elizabeth, Colorado, 80107. The applicant is Earl Raymond, and Kyle Fenner is the applicant representative. The owner of the property is Earl Raymond. Please note that there is a minor plat to subdivide the property into four lots with three commercial of approximately five each, and one 17.5 acre agriculture residential lot that will be reviewed pending approval of the rezone process, and the minor plat is not part of this rezoning process. So the process for this application started a while back, back in 2017, and has gone through several iterations over a period of about six years. The pre-application for this application was submitted in February of 2022. There was a community meeting in March of 2022. This application was deemed formally submitted August 9th, 2023, with the rezone instead of rezone to PUD. There were several referral periods for this application, the most recent concluding in September of this year. The hearing process dates are today for Planning Commission, and then we have a Board of County Commissioners meeting scheduled October 25th of this year. All public noticing complied with Elbert County zoning regulations and subdivision regulation, 14-day advance notice, with posting in Ranchland News September 21st, 1320 quarter-mile radius mailing September 7th, and onsite signposting September 19th. Just a brief overview of the county and where this application is located within the county. It's depicted there by that yellow dot, and we'll move in a little bit here. So here's an overview of the location of the property. It's near the western border of Elbert County and north of Elizabeth by about a mile. It is on County Road 13 between 142 and 146. Here's another aerial view of the property. Here you can see the property in its entirety. Please note that that flag-shaped property in the middle is not a part of this rezoning. That parcel is zoned residential agriculture 1, and the existing zoning for the parcel as a whole is zoned ag. Currently, there is a commercial business operating, and this business is in the steel building construction industry. Here's another aerial map and a closer look of the property. As you can see, Running Creek is the drainage to the east and somewhat parallel to County Road 13. The site can be described as rolling pasture lands with a creek bed and an existing 60 by 144-foot structure. The steel building is directly adjacent to an existing residence. There is flood plain on the property, and that is to the west of County Road 13, or sorry, excuse me, east of County Road 13. Flood plain extends across the eastern portion of this parcel. There are wetlands on the property, and it can be considered riverine with intermittent stream bed, temporary flooded, and this area is likely seasonally wet, possibly by overbank flooding or backwater flooding. Here's another closer look at the property and the current development. As you can see, all development on this property is currently located in the northern portion of the property. Here's a look at the current zoning of the area. As you can see, the, to the north, you have a parcel zoned agriculture 2 with a 26.7 acre parcel. That currently has three buildings owned by the Creekside Community Church. To the south, you have a 41.6 acre horse ranch and residential with six buildings. To the east, we have a 50 acre agriculture parcel with one residence and 14 outbuildings. And to the west, we have PUD zoning, part of the Western Country Ranch subdivision, and you have two parcels there, 39.3 acre agriculture with a residence and several outbuildings, and a 39.5 acre agricultural with a residence. Moving on, this map shows the existing zoning with the economic development zone overlay highlighted. As you can see, the EDZ runs down County Road 13 north and south. As, also, minor note, the PUD was not included in the EDZ per regulations. If there was a PUD existing, they were not added to the EDZ. Here's an overview of some of the referral responses we've received, and all referrals were acknowledged and/or resolved through this process. So through the Division of Water Resources with the State of Colorado, there was the request to submit an application for repermitting of the well, which was satisfied, and that would be processed if the minor plat is approved. Corr had no objections to the rezoning. All necessary utility easements are in place, and Corr approves the rezoning. The Elbert County Assessors Office had no objections. Elbert County Public Health, no objections. They must complete application for septic permits at the time of development for undeveloped lots, and there was a current system inspection in September of 2022. With Elbert County Public Works, there were no objections. Albert Fire, excuse me, Elizabeth Fire Protection District has resolved all outstanding comments. No objections from the Kiowa Conservation District, and the Elbert County Engineer, excuse me, requested that erosion control plans are submitted at the time of commercial lot development. So in Elbert County, Article 3C4 lists six criteria for all rezoning requests. The Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners are to consider these six criteria in their review of the application. They are as follows. A, whether the proposed rezoning conforms to and is generally consistent with the goals and policies of the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. So we have a few different policies that apply to this specific rezoning. The first is residential development policy 2 for the agriculture residential lot, and the goal there is to preserve open space and preserve the rural character of Elbert County. Clustered residential development patterns are encouraged, and that is generally within one mile of a paved road and existing utility corridors, which this project is, and within the three-mile service and/or influence of a county town. Again, this is about a mile north of the town of Elizabeth. In terms of commercial development policies, we have a couple policies that apply here. Commercial development should generally be within the economic development overlay zone of which this application is a part of. Commercial development should be encouraged where arterial road access, water and sewer service, and suitable topography exist. We believe that meets the criteria here, and commercial development should be part of an overall development plan. Again, the county recently, about four years ago, instituted the economic development overlay to encourage commercial development. Criteria B is whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with surrounding land uses. This development is near other commercial development and gathering places. For example, you have the Creekside Community Church, a large gathering place to the north. Then you have several other businesses along this corridor, including Hitch and Post Hay, Ewing Outdoor Supply, Creekside Animal Hospital, among several other businesses. Again, this is approximately a mile north of Elizabeth, and please note that a proximity to the residence there has caused conflict in the past. We want to illuminate that fact. This proposed rezoning is also compatible with the economic development overlay, which covers the entirety of the proposed commercial area. C, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the provision of public services. Public Works reviewed this proposed rezoning and access for the three new lots from County Road 13. These access points should not adversely impact the provision of public services. The two commercial lots, again, to the south, will share single access, and the volume of traffic makes this shared entrance much safer than having individual entrance points. Finally, we have D here, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the environment. The proposed rezoning should not adversely impact the environment. The applicant has submitted a drainage study and will not be building in the flood plain. The applicant is aware of the flood plain, and development should be consistent with flood plain regulations. Individual site plans also will be in place to mitigate any adverse impacts, and erosion plans will be submitted for the commercial development when they happen. Now we have E, whether the proposed rezoning would create unreasonable traffic congestion or burden the existing road system without improvements. The addition of the proposed lots is not believed to create unreasonable traffic burdens to the existing road system. The applicant submitted two traffic studies. Finally, we have F, whether the proposed rezoning will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants of Elbert County. Staff here at Elbert County believe that this rezoning request to commercial and agriculture residential will not be detrimental to county residents' health, safety, or welfare. So our findings are, from Elbert County Planning, are to recommend the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to approve this requested rezone for Systems Properties, RZ-233557, subject to the following conditions. The applicant will be required to remove the public hearing sign within seven days of a decision. The rezoning shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the exhibits are recorded, and recordation of all appropriate documentation is to occur within 180 days of the Board of County Commissioners' approval. Another approval condition I'd like to note is that the applicant will provide a record of a current onsite wastewater treatment system inspection. Elbert County Health does have a current inspection, and that condition has been satisfied. And the other was, the applicant must submit to the Colorado Division of Water Resources a well permit application to repermit the existing well, and the applicant has submitted a well permit application to repermit the existing well. This application will only process if the minor plat is approved, and this condition has been satisfied. Final just note is that cash and lieu for open space for 10% of the new residential lot created is also a condition of approval. Thank you all for coming tonight. We really appreciate all your time and effort here in Elbert County, and I'd like to conclude my presentation there. I will include the rezone exhibit here for everybody to see now. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. One quick question for you. Why is this coming through the county instead of, like, Elizabeth? Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
So there was talk at one point of annexation into the town of Elizabeth, and after a lot of discussion with the town, that was deemed to, I don't know, it was not the best solution for this application. Elizabeth, obviously, is about a mile away, and there is, you know, quite a distance between this application and Elizabeth. It is not immediately adjacent to the town.
Thank you. Okay, at this point in time, if the applicant would like to elaborate on the presentation? So, okay, so that we don't need... If there's anything you, if anything you want to add or anything like that, you're more than welcome. Would you say your name and address, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kyle Fenner, and I live at 7190 Malteem Central, and that's in March, for 8011. So this, this application, obviously, has been going on great deal of time, and I want to further address your question on the annexation, why we weren't working with the city of Elizabeth. We came this close, I mean, literally had checks cut to go through with the annexation, and then could not get a commitment out of the town saying wind, water, sewer, whatever being put in. And so the developers would get stuck with a subdivision of small commercial lots and have no services, and those lots would not be allowed to have, have well attached there because they had been annexed into a district and so it really was not workable.
But it wasn't pure, you have the option of either, based on the property?
Yes, it really, actually, part of the regulations here, I believe, state that we lost actually... Yeah, we, yep, correct. And, and the applicant can choose whether or not the deal, which deal works better for the applicant, and in this case, working with the county was the better deal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this point, we're going to open public testimony, and if anybody would like to speak, you have three minutes, and if you... you have three minutes, and if you want to speak, you step up to the podium and give your name and address. And make sure the mic is on, please. It'll show a green light if it's on. Okay, you need to give the, them a copy, too.
Three minutes is a little short, since I'm the homeowner. It's surrounded. No, you can, you can read it later. Okay, well, it's just the last page you can skip, but... I, I didn't, I wasn't aware that there was a way to even get stuff to that, since I wasn't part of the application.
Okay, you can go ahead with your...
So, all right, so my name's Gary Dickinson, and I'm a single father of two girls, and I live at 35568 County Road 13. And I own the house that is surrounded by the property that is the subject of this meeting. I moved to Elizabeth, Colorado, for the peace and quiet, and I thought this would be a great place to raise my daughters. Since 2016, I've had multiple businesses illegally occupy the building that is 12 feet from my property line, and it isn't anything but quiet and peaceful. I've had to defend my water rights. I've had the neighbor driving on my property and had to go to court for both of those different things, which has caused some of these delays, both of which now have been settled. They had to go drill their own well, and now they're not allowed to drive on my property or cross my property like they thought they could when the process started. So I'd also like to point out that the paperwork, I've seen a lot of these come through here because I read most of them, trying to get an idea of what goes on in the county, and the paperwork supplies lacking setbacks, accessory buildings, storage units, the parking area, and there's no plans that I can see to screen between the commercial building and my property. In community meetings, we were told there'd be a design guide and that the storage area that's there would be fully screened. My family now has to stare at the back of where they store all their equipment, which I believe is a safety hazard. It's something that attracts kids to go play on the equipment, and they've done nothing to try to get rid of that, even though I've brought this stuff up back in 2017 when this started, when the first meetings. So I provided you with the documents that, that outline all the issues that I have, but I'd like to just talk about a couple. The first issue is the shared access that I'm being told that I would have to do. I have to now drive through what's going to be a commercial lot, two businesses, lots of activity, but to get to my house, I have to go through that parking lot. Part of that parking lot, or half of it, which most of the parking spots are actually on my property, and there is an easement for them to be able to park there, but it's not an exclusive easement. So I could park 10 cars there if I wanted to.
Pardon me, Chair, that's three minutes?
So that doesn't leave them enough parking for, to operate.
Okay, you've got your hands.
So, all right, that talks about buffering and some other issues that are problematic today.
Thank you.
Please read that.
My name is Don Oris. I have the property on the south side of the proposed development.
Your address, too, please.
3558 County Road 13. I'm particularly going after item E in the approval. We think that the multiple entrances, three of them on 1,000 feet of front, frontage is too much. We think there are alternatives to that. I have provided you with a rough assessment. If this was the kind of entrances that were provided for all up and down 13, between 86 and 166, you'd have a 500% increase in entrances on that property. Within our particular area, the property to the south has a commercial operation on it. It's right on our property line. We have one entrance on 1,000 square feet, and then you're going to put three more within 1,700 square feet, or, I'm sorry, 700 square feet roughly. So you're going to have five entrances, three of them commercial, within about 1,700 feet in total. You can't say that that's not going to impact traffic on a 50 mile an hour highway. It just doesn't work that way. I've also provided you with a satellite show of density on County Road 13 in this section of the road. This is the density right in front of our house. It's done by a satellite thing that ties in. I won't go into the explanation there, but you're definitely going to have a traffic impact here. We're not opposing the development here. I'll stress that. We're pleased with the lot next to us being designated as rural or residential, if that holds. But the issue here is the overall development of the county. You wouldn't have these kind of entrances and density on a major road. We're in commercial real estate business. We own property that's on Parker Road. We own par, property in the Promenade and Castle Rock. You don't see entrances directly in. This development can be done if the parties can get together and figure it out. They have an incentive to do that. And without having three entrances, without all of this development, it won't change the traffic pattern. What happens is, you still get the traffic, but what happens is, you then go to lights and the traffic flows through. Go down Founder's Parkway, you can see traffic up the wazoo, but it, it still works that way. So this thing needs to be reconfigured, in our opinion. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, I am Donna Palmer. I live on 35255 County Road 17. I am not directly impacted by this development, one way or the other, but I did not see or hear that he mentioned the high school is on this road and the middle school. And this chart shows you 5,000 cars a day up and down that road. I'm a mother, a grandmother, a great-grandmother, and I'm saying safety, construction, and speed, and high school kids driving, school buses. I think County Road 17 needs to stay as rural as we can keep it for all this traffic that goes to and from these schools that were not even mentioned up there. I don't know if you're, how you see all this, but the safety is my concern for young people.
Thank you very much.
I'm Jill Wackenshaw. I live at 3376 County Road 146, here in Elizabeth. I'm across the creek from that beautiful piece of land. Really, the only thing, I, I concur with Dawn. Change is going to happen in the county. There's no doubt about it. I've been there for 40 years, and I've seen my share of it. I'm not surprised. I'm not against, I always tell people, it's America. If you have the dream and you can finance it and it's legal, people should be able to do what they want to do. But I, I'm going to echo the concern about that many driveways on that piece of property. I'm sure you know during the summer, traffic flow is one thing, but right now, the traffic in the morning and the traffic between 3:00 and 4:30 is nuts, and half of them, it seems, are high school kids who don't always pay attention to the traffic speed limits. And I'm thinking, if you have people, nobody has taken a guess on what is going to go on those five acres. It could be a Texas Roadhouse. It could be a Home Depot. That's all part of the EDZ. If it gets approved, anything can go there. And the amount of traffic that comes out of, for example, a Home Depot or a very popular restaurant, that's going to be a problem, and that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
My wife was here, and we live at 35255 County Road 17, which is up from the river. And the river, as we've seen it just this last month, has been in overflow situation. And I don't know exactly where the water came from or from how much it can be have. They closed County Road 13 completely. They had to wait until they could get more equipment on and so forth, which is a main one road. I think what it is, about 23 years we've been here, and I think the first year or two, they had another flood like this, and it washed out all the culverts going down below, and there was some that was raided. I think that this one here was just about the same as that one there. So what I'm looking at from an agriculture, really, situation, that it should be left as agricultural. There's going to be somebody that's going to drown in one of these flash floods, and you can then look back on yourself and say, well, I did the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, so then, if there's nobody else that wants to speak, we're going to... Did you win? Sure. Just state your name and address, please.
Laura Oris. I live at 35558 County Road 13, and it's right next door to where the agricultural number four idea is. And I guess what I really want to say is, I'm a retired school teacher of children and had grandsons that's already been in car accidents on the school grounds, being hit, and the safety of the kids is so important, as Donna Palmer was saying, and like, we have the high school, the middle school, and then across the street, we have the gymnastics. We plan not to leave our house at that time in the morning when the traffic is busy, and we never leave around 3 o'clock to 4 o'clock because we don't want to get in the middle of this high school traffic. But the kids come first, and I have always believed if you own the land, that it's yours to do what's legal and right. But when you're infringing on your neighbor's land and not sticking to the exact footage, then that needs to be taken into consideration and examined to make sure it's accurate. But the kids come first.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none. I will close public testimony. And at this point, we, the applicant can have their rebuttal.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kyle Fenner, 71, do I need to say it again? 7190 Nautique Circle, Larkspur, Colorado, 80118. Thank you for your time tonight. I know it's a late night. I want to just kind of go through everything that I heard. I think first and foremost is that we have to realize that this is already in the EDZ. So the county has contemplated this as a commercial corridor. So that's just one thing to kind of address. Now, can you put the map up of the subdivision for me? On access, I want to just show you. So, so obviously, the flag lot that's in the center is not a part of this application. The first attempt was to cross that and drive all traffic through the existing one, except for the residential to the south. The property owner of that home was actually a part of our application process. He lacked some legal zoning at the time, and we were going to include him and rezone his property the way he needed it to be rezoned at the time, and at the same time, give him over an acre of property that goes from his eastern edge down to the eastern edge of the subject property. Everything was going along swimmingly, and for his own reasons, he pulled out, and we were no longer allowed to cross that, that isthmus, so to speak, of, of land, so we had to come up with an alternative. We think the alternative, well, actually, we know the alternative. We've had two traffic studies done. We have traffic engineers that have done physical road counts out here, and they've deemed it not dangerous, given the road counts and the load that is anticipated, given the use of commercial on each of these properties. So the traffic is, I, I think our experts have spoken. I'm certainly not a traffic engineer. I'm relying on them. I want to give you a little history on how this all happened. This used to be a single lot. That five-acre parcel was created by a bank foreclosure, and the banks randomly drew a line around it and encumbered it with, with a loan, and that person didn't pay their loan, and it got foreclosed on, which instantaneously created a five-acre parcel smack dab in the middle of what's a 35-acre parcel now. So to begin with, that was a somewhat distressed location anyway. This used, these used to operate together. They used to share water well. They used to share a septic system. Now they look, no longer share each, but interestingly enough, prior to our drilling the well, the pressure tank was on the applicant's property, the well was on the opposition's property, and the applicant paid the electric bill for operating the well for a number of years. So they negotiated an MOU through the courts to just divest of each other as much as possible. I think that that's a better, better plan. So now, in hindsight, I think crossing another person's property for your primary access is probably a bad idea in the long run. Okay, I want to just address the community meeting. I, I've met most of these people who've spoken. They're very, very nice people, and I understand passion. Believe me, I understand it in my neighborhood. When we had the community meeting, I received pages of questions, and primarily from Mr. Oris and Mr. Dickinson. And I just looked at my records, and I responded to Mr. Dickinson with nine pages of Q and A. I detailed every single one of his concerns. Mr. Oris, it was four pages. So we've not, not been in communication, so this information has been shared. Okay. We've worked on alternatives. Okay, I want to talk about the Texas Roadhouse and the Home Depot. They can't happen here. These lots are very limited to the water they can use. They have a water... They have a water use plan that the state has to approve. The state has approved it and they have very, very limited water. Their water is in the Upper Dawson. The water rights are owned by the applicant in all four aquifers, but right now, we're looking at the Upper Dawson. They can't use it commercially. It can be used for sanitary purposes only, flushing toilets, washing hands. So Home Depot and Texas Roadhouse is, is a non-starter. And I think that that addresses everything. So the distance separation, again, was spoken about by the traffic engineers. So if you've got any questions, I'm here and can answer them. I've been working on this a long time. I'm pretty familiar.
Thank you.
Would you like me to stay up here or no?
Not at the moment, please. I'm, I'm, well, let's hold on one second. Can you bring up what the EDZ actually allows on those properties? There are specific requirements as to what types of businesses can be there and what has to go through further approvals in order to happen.
So here are the EDZ standards. Appropriate buffering between varying uses. So that's something we will be looking at with the site plan. But in terms of different uses, it allows for uses such as commercial, business, and industrial. And there is a potential subdivision in the EDZ process that allows for similar type developments. And I can, if you'd like to read the site development plan authorization that's required from an EDZ, that is something listed here too. Any specific questions about it, we can go through these EDZ regulations.
Do you have a list of the actual types of operations allowed within the EDZ?
So business, commercial, and industrial uses. So basically, we can look through the land use table of what types of uses. It's very broad in the EDZ. And this process is actually, there's going to be more restrictions probably on these lots than a general EDZ site plan. But we can go through the land use table if you'd like. So here's our land use table. And we can go through different uses that are allowed on business, commercial, industrial, or EDZ. This is going for commercial rezoning, which has less permitted uses than traditional EDZ. Do you want to look at specific land uses?
There, there's specific types of businesses that can go in there. If you can...
Yes, this, these pages of this table. So we can go through, do you want to go line by line?
If you could just name what, what those uses are. It'd be, it'd be easy. I mean, it's, it's, it's a major concern here. So I think if they will show what the actual types of businesses that can go in there.
So, so commercial versus EDZ. For instance, we have theater. That is, and it's hard for me to read this, but on commercial, it would be permitted. On EDZ, it would be exempt. So, I mean, excuse me. We can, use allowed with approved site plan is in EDZ. So i- in a lot of ways, there's more strict regulations for commercial versus EDZ. One thing on here, for example, would be a greenhouse. On a commercial lot, it's not allowed. On an EDZ property, it would be, need an EDZ site plan. Something like agricultural equipment and sales, that's permitted on commercial. It would need an EDZ site plan. Commercial feed yard, permitted on commercial, EDZ site plan necessary. Livestock feed store permitted on commercial, it would need an EDZ site plan. Animal shelter, it would need a special use by review on a commercial. On EDZ, it would need an EDZ site plan. Yeah, all, all of the lots will need site plans for approval. And with that, you know, everything that goes with that, from erosion to different drainage features that are going to need to be planned specific to the business that's going in. And I think that's the most important thing to note, that it's not going to be just, you know, paving a parking lot there on, you know, sloping land near a drainage. They're going to need to be specific controls to limit adverse impacts like potential drainage and everything around the flood plain is going to be basically avoided because you have to go through the Corps of Engineers for flood plain development and FEMA regulations for flood plain development. So we're not looking at, you know, developing these lots through the flood plain. Another important note is the agriculture residential lot to the south. In terms of access there, we're expecting, you know, access like a general home. So it could be five to ten trips a day from a, from a home or residence. And then in your other two commercial lots, you have a shared access point. And that's the only real way to configure this in its current layout that doesn't cross Mr. Dickinson's land, which is something that I, I saw initial site plan drawings and there was the one access point and it crossed Gary's land. And I don't think that's favorable to him either to have traffic moving across his land from other commercial businesses. So the current layout was really the best we could do. In terms of speed limits, maybe there should be recommendations to lower the speed limit on County Road thirteen. That's out of my purview, but you know, it could make sense based on everybody's concerns of fast-moving traffic in the area. I am not living on that street, so I, I don't have the best, you know, experience there.
Thank you. I think, I think you kind of get the idea that it's, it's a very difficult process that they have to go through to get something approved. It's not just a slam dunk. And they have to go through all the applications for what they're going to do. And setbacks and everything else are going to be part of that. So with that in mind, we've got some questions from some of the other members here. So Eric, we can start with you if you have any and we'll just work our way around.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm looking at page thirty-eight, the, the Colorado Division of Water Resources, the last paragraph. And I don't see, they're recommending, or they're pointing out, excuse me, they're pointing out that they're not, they don't like the fact that the water hundred year or three hundred year is going to be, you know, be valid. Sorry, I'm trying to find this again. The county should be aware that the economic life of water supply based on the wells is in, in given Denver Basin aquifer may be less than a hundred years used for allocation due to anticipated water level declines. We recommend the county determine whether it's appropriate to require development of renewable water, renewable water resources for this subdivision to provide a long-term water supply. And there's a, that's the last paragraph, page nine of their letter and a couple paragraphs above. It, it states that there is subject to a six hundred foot spacing in accordance to particular section of the law. I don't think it meets that six hundred foot objective. Therefore, well permit, a hearing should be held to determine if the circumstances warrant the issuance of a well permit. I'm not seeing that these things have been met.
There's a lot of disclaimers in those, always.
Correct. And, and I understand that there were a lot of communications that went back and forth. I'm going to go to the finish line first, is that the state has approved it. The state has considered all of this and reconsidered all of this. The state has said, yes, we agree with your approved water plan and yes, we will allow this well to be re-permitted when this gets subdivided. But it won't be re-permitted unless it gets subdivided. The water use plan was incredibly detailed and submitted to them for their evaluation and they were, they approved it. So...
So it's the win in the if of subdivision.
And, and some of...
It wasn't a real good thing the state did because they actually put it back on you to get everything done before they would approve.
And that's, that's sensible because you don't want to re-permit the land until that. Well, the other thing that I want to state is that when we drilled this well, to separate the shared well and the shared water tank and all of that, when this well was drilled, we only asked for water allocation for the future five acre parcel. So that's all the water that that soon-to-be, hopefully-to-be five acre parcel can use. So we don't need to reallocate water. We only need to describe the new size of the parcel because it's going to no longer be on thirty-five, it's going to be on five.
Okay.
And some of that language in there is, I'm not going to say canned, it's standard language. They always, there's always a disclaimer that says, we do not guarantee our hundred years is going to last a hundred years or our three hundred years is going to last a hundred, happens on every single one of them.
You'll see that consistently.
But really, once you've got, does the state guarantee you get from the state to the state?
Correct. Yes. And, and, and again, the, the owner owns all the water rights. And all we're doing is allocating the water that's in the Upper Dawson. That's it. None of the water in Denver has been allocated, none of the water in, in Arapahoe or Laramie-Fox. The other thing that's key is that when the well was, was initially considered for the thirty-five acre parcel, it has X amount of water left. They had to subtract the water that was consumed over the years by the, the house being lived in and systems properties operating. There was a, there was a meter on it. And so that was subtracted from the total, from the hundred years. So we only had eighty-seven years to work with. I'm just throwing that number out. And so the, the gallons went down. But this water use plan doesn't use a gallon more water than what would be approved for the thirty-five acre parcel today. Not one. All it does is spread it out. It's the same exact volume of water.
Okay. Any other question, Eric?
Have we, has, has it been settled about the six hundred foot?
Oh, yes.
What's my term here?
Separation. Yeah.
Setback.
Well, there's six hundred foot separation between a well that was going to use more than what it was already permitted to use. So if the applicant, hmm, I'm just going to grab some numbers. There's a hundred thousand acres left in this aquifer that, that the owner can use. If he wanted to drill a well that consumed a hundred fifty thousand acres, then he would have to have a six hundred foot separation. If he's only getting the water out of the aquifer that it's already permitted for, that, that separation isn't a part of it. We contemplated it a lot. We went to water court. We had hearings with judges. And so the settlement was that, okay, this, this development is truly just going to use the water that it already has.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that helpful?
That's, that's all my questions.
I have a, I have a question.
Great.
Only it's not, one of the homeowners stated that there's going to be uses of the drive in and out. They share that, is that right?
That is, it, it was part of the, the foreclosure. The foreclosure drilled random lines and made both lots really bad. And what we're trying to do, but let me, let me finish. So, so that little, the driveway, actually existing driveway, sits on the applicant's land. The driveway does, but...
Doesn't it?
It does. Yeah. Yeah, forty-eight feet of it. So it's, it, where the driveway is constructed is actually on the applicant's land, but that driveway is shared by the two. And it's also discussed in the MOU that they negotiated and agreed to separating things where they could separate things and agreed to uses that they couldn't separate. So this was contemplated already.
So with the history that's come before us in recent weeks, who's going to maintain that road?
The, the owner of the property is bound to.
Okay. So he's going to maintain it so that the other neighbor...
To the benefit for the other neighbor.
For the other neighbor. Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure. That was, that was it. We've had too many neighbors screaming about that.
Yeah.
Okay. Correct. Correct. There is just over three hundred feet from the southernmost, which accesses the residential agriculture, to the shared access to lots two and three. Then there's over six hundred feet between that entrance and the existing entrance.
Are you...
What?
When you put all three of them in, you got a thousand feet in front of you.
No.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You've had your chance.
If you...
Thank you. Hold on.
We, we submitted, we submitted absolute layout of this and I don't have it in front of me. I can pull it up on my computer.
I was looking at it and that's my question.
Would you like to see it?
No, I, I, I have it here.
Oh, okay. So I don't have that memorized.
Okay. Now, would you be required to put Excel, DExcel, Lane?
No, no. The traffic study didn't warrant them.
Okay. I noticed that, that was my next question.
Yes.
What, what the traffic study showed was that really you're only going to have about two, two hundred, two hundred and... What, what the traffic study showed was that really you're only gonna have about 200, 232?
Collective, mm-hmm.
Half in, half out?
Yep.
What's the existing traffic on it? It's quite a bit more than that, isn't it?
The existing traffic on the shared access point? That, right, so the one...
Right now.
Uh, no, it's considerably less than that. Are you talk, no, it's considerably less than that. You have residential use...
You've got people coming up and down County Road 13.
Oh, I didn't know what you're talking about, the traffic count going north and south on the road. Um, that's in the traffic study as well. I do not have that memorized. I can guarantee you that.
It's considerably more than the, than, than the 232 in and outs.
Yes, yes, because only 232 of the people going north and south on 13.
And according to the traffic study, you would be operating at a level, it would be operated at a level of service of C.
Correct.
Which is acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not gonna increase the traffic to the point where you've got miles of traffic backed up.
Correct, and I believe probably most of the county roads operate at C.
Yes, they do. All right.
Okay. What's that? Reference? Yeah, oh absolutely, Kinley Horn tore it apart.
Yeah, they're, they're very good, yeah.
Yeah.
And it looks like...
No, it's not Sean.
At peak, at peak travel, and again, I want to confirm this, at peak travel, okay, that's 24-hour period.
Correct.
Peak would be... 23 in and 5 out in the morning. 9 in and 20 out in, in the afternoon.
Correct.
Again, those are a couple-hour periods, so you're looking at maybe one every five, six minutes.
Yeah, there's not a backup being created, for sure.
Yeah, no, I'm, and I'm, I'm sure they did, like I said, I've dealt with Kinley Horn.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they sure read you.
That, that was my question. The water issue was another question, but you've already answered.
Okay, thank you. Say again? The line of sight is good, I would actually say, again, the safety triangle, well, it far exceeds the safety triangle for, for the inner, for creating an intersection, which a driveway technically coming out to County Road 13 can be considered an intersection. It is. The, the, that triangle never even really came into play. It's not a curve, it's, no, yeah, and that would be true, and the traffic study would've said that. I mean, they were physically out there doing the count, they know the road.
Well, I can say this, from where I live...
Yes, sir.
It's quite a bit higher off of road, my road coming out on 86.
Wow, yeah, 86 is crazy these days. Yeah, I, I lived out here for a while, and I came out here last week, and I was like, wow, wow. Okay.
I just had some setback concerns, but it doesn't sound like we're addressing those.
We aren't addressing those at this point. They were actually, I had them on this exhibit, and they asked me to remove them, because they don't belong on a rezon exhibit, they belong on the subdivision, and they are gonna be commercial setbacks. I mean, they're, they're outlined in your zoning code, we're not deviating from that, we're not asking for anything. We are asking for less than the, the separation because of the lot line between the two properties. We can't do anything about that one particular place, that's, it stinks for both of them. But all the other ones that anybody has any control over are gonna meet the, the code for commercial setbacks. And I want to jump in just quickly, too. It doesn't have as many industrial uses as the EDZ does. So if industrial uses were something people were concerned of, noise and smoke and whatever, that can't happen on commercial and business.
Danny, I have a question that might be really more directed at you. With respect to the, the water, from the division of water. I, I, as long as I've been on the commission, I haven't approved a rezon that had, that didn't have a well permit already permitted, and we are being asked to approve something that has a state, a letter that says, "This has plenty of water, it fits all this stuff, but we'll go through the permit process after this." And so can you explain if that's, if that's appropriate for us to...
So the condition was that the applicant submit the re-permit application, so they have it on file, and they actually, they hadn't done that until last week, the end of last week, and then they resubmitted what they need to so that the well can be re-permitted for the size. They, they currently have sufficient water, it was just the allocation to that well, and the state needed to have on file the application, and they fulfilled that condition quickly, so they did satisfy that condition.
Can I fill in there a little bit? Okay, there's an existing well, there's an existing well.
Agreed, agreed, but if you're...
No, 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 they were separated. So, so it has its own well that was drilled last year, so it's permitted. We're just re-permitting that existing well down from a 35-acre parcel to describing a 5-acre parcel around that well. Does that make sense? Okay.
But there is no permit, well permit at this moment.
There, no, it's already permitted. What they're saying is we had to file a re-permit to re-describe the size, that's all. We're not reallocating any water, nothing, nothing, just the size from 35 to 5. Yes, yes, they're not gonna permit a well for 5-acre parcel that doesn't exist.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I think that...
Right, and it's only re-permiting for size.
I think that's pretty clear at this point.
I'm, I'm sorry about that.
I think, I think...
But what we do, going back to the water, and I think the water matters, and that's exactly why, when I applied for this well, this new well, I only applied for the 5 acres of water that sat underneath that footprint, because water matters a bit more than describing the surface of the land.
Okay, I think, I think we got that covered pretty well.
That's... Do you have any questions?
I have one more, I have one more of those, okay?
Okay, one more question.
I think I probably should address it to Mark. How is the community supposed to know the process to submit documents like this? Where would they find that information? I think it's unfortunate they put these together and we were unable to view them when they should've been in our packet. During the community meeting, that should be a requirement, if it's not, it should be a requirement, that to notify the citizens how they would go about giving these to us.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Yeah, at any time, the public is welcome to submit any kind of comments prior to any public hearing.
How would they, how would they know that?
Uh, that, that's, I mean, that's...
They should be doing it prior, and how long, how much prior?
It could be...
The day before?
It could be...
Before, two weeks before?
It could be at any time, up until, um, yeah, until today.
That's what happened, and we weren't able to review their documents.
Well, actually, these, this documentation will go into the packets that go to the commissioners, correct?
Yes.
We can get this in the packet, definitely, yeah.
Yeah, even though they were submitted here, granted, and, and, but they are on record now, because these will go in the packet that goes on to the commissioner.
Correct, thank you, yeah, and then, you know, between now and the Board of County Commissioner hearing date, any type of public, you know, concerns, anything they would like to have documented can be submitted right to our department. And then we'll make sure that that's inserted in the Board of County Commissioners' packet, and they'll have that prior to the hearing.
But for, for example, my point is, going forward, for example, anyone that's noticed, that should be in the notice when they're noticed. Hey, if you have any documentation that you would like to provide, you need to provide it to the planning staff this amount of days prior to the meeting, or during the community meeting, they could be notified. Hey, if you guys have any input that you guys want to submit, this is what happens. I think that should be a requirement.
Yeah, I don't have the noticing document in front of me, but if, if, if it's not something that, you know, we could certainly consider.
Because it gives you information as to where you can submit information or find out information on the application, on the, on the noticing, on the thing. I'm not, I'm not 100% certain.
That's on the sign, the big yellow sign that says, hey, if you have any input to...
Yeah, that's why it has to be up there a couple weeks before, but I'm not sure exactly what it states.
And, and the community, and... Just for clarification on, on the community meeting, pardon me, yeah, just for clarification, on the community meeting phase of the process, that is actually the applicant's meeting. The, the staff attends that meeting, but they're there just to observe the process and just verify what transpires, because then the applicant who conducted the meeting, they, they will, you know, they give county staff a, a summary of, you know, the, the concerns that were raised and so forth. So the community meeting stage may, is, is not, may not be the appropriate place to actually put this out.
That was just a possibility, that that may be a good time to bring that up.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, certainly...
And they want to submit it in writing, kind of give them the guidelines on how that would work.
Yeah, it's on the yellow sign. Contact Albert County Community Development Services for more information, and it gives a phone number and the email address. But it also gives them the notice, the case number, and everything. Believe me, because we have plenty of people who sign, who reference that sign when we get in.
Public testimony is closed.
Well, well, the reason I, the reason I brought up the, the documentation was because this wasn't the first time that I've seen that happen. I've seen it a few, a number of times, or a couple other times where people had brought documentation to the meeting, thinking that they, it was okay to hand it out, so I was just wondering what that process was, that's all.
That, that process should definitely be looked into and improved upon. I think anyone from the public should know, i-if they want something included in a meeting packet to address us directly. There were hundreds of documents with this rezon in particular because of the timeline, and it's sometimes difficult to know what to include. I try to, you know, include enough information, but I also don't want to overwhelm everybody that's reading it. But in terms of community comment, I think you're right, that should be, made sure that we, we get it in, in the process and make sure that's evident in the packet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, this has been a board-only discussion at this point. And is there no further questions? Jane, a motion? Do you like to make a motion on that?
Okay, let me find the number that... There, thank you. I move that we recommend approval for RZ-233557. Okay, with the following conditions that were outlined.
Okay, it's been moved. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Danny and a second by Van. All in favor? Aye. Okay. At this point, what we've done is just made a recommendation to the board. The Board of County Commissioners is the one that actually approves it. So anybody that would like to go to the BOCC meeting and present to them, I would highly recommend that you do. That's a meeting that really tells a tale. We do the public hearing and gather information for them, and then when they do their BOCC meeting that you saw coming up on the schedule, they're the ones that actually make the, the decision on it. And they will have this whole package to review, and will have the ability to get legal counsel and everything else that they need to have in order to work with that, so. You're more than welcome to come up to that meeting and present your information to them. The information you pass out today, you already know is gonna be part of the packet that they have and to look at. Thank you all for coming, I really appreciate your input. Hold on just a moment.
Information to the county, if you do it through email, then you either email CDS or your commissioner, and you have a tracking process knowing that it got, it got sent, and then you should be able to actually see your information in that packet online. Okay, that gives a way you can track what you're, what you're referring to the county. So if you email it to CDS, or you can email it to your commissioner, because your commissioner's gonna forward it right to CDS, and you're gonna be able to see it. So that's a sure way to track it and know that it got presented.
Okay. We'll move on, and we'll close the public hearing on the systems properties rezon, RZ-23-3557. So now... No. We're not adjourning, we're not adjourning. At this point in time, since I'm leaving, we have to have an election for a new chair and a vice chair. And so at this point in time, Danny Wilcox is the vice chair, and I'll open nominations for chairman. And I'd like to nominate Danny Wilcox for chair. Hang on, all in favor? Aye. You got stuck with it. Okay, now, I'll open nominations for the vice chair. Pardon? And we all voted on it. And so... It was unanimous. Okay, so now we're gonna open nominations for vice chair.
Do they need to be present at the meeting tonight?
No. Well, actually, I talked with Kevin, I agree, I agree with that. I talked with Kevin, and he said he would be honored to fill the position, and I actually have a letter from him, if I need to bring it up, that he would accept the nomination. For vice chair. So, all in favor? Aye. So, I've got it, you wanna see it? So Kevin Kirkwood has been accepted as vice chair, and Danny Wilcox is chair. So Kevin Kirkwood has been accepted as vice chair, and Danny Wilcox is chair. So at this point in time, since Danny is now chair, he gets to close the meeting.
Move to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
Do you have just some little snacks you'd like?
Boy, that bank sure messed up that lot, didn't they? Holy cow. There's a random line around and said, okay, we're going to, we're going to lean that five acres with the house.
And that's what they did.
A lot of it was Debbie's fault, too. Because a lot of that happened before the bankers.
I didn't like quick answers.
So, that was my understanding. She was funny, because they wanted to separate out- They wanted to, they wanted to separate out the house from the, from that building.
Congratulations, Danny.